Okay, good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. If you'd rise please and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call of council. Councilmember Wozniak?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Wilms?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Mr. Fowler is ill tonight.
Okay, before I begin citizen input, just a few things because I don't think all of you attend these meetings on a regular basis, so this may be new to you. This is an ordinance. There are actually two ordinances. One is a rezoning and one has to do with the regulations and that's probably what most of you are here about. The zoning is more of a housekeeping item. An ordinance is a resolution, excuse me, is a law, unlike a resolution which is a will of intent of council to do something. So as a result, an ordinance is read three times before it's voted on. Now, typically that would be three consecutive council meetings, but not always because you can also table, which means we don't think we're ready to move to the next step, so we're going to table or put it aside until a future meeting. A case in point is the septic ordinance that we worked on for over a year. We started in 2021, no, excuse me, 2020 in December and we ended in December of 2021 because there was a great deal of work to do. So we just tabled it out there so that we could go through the process, have the citizen input, have discussions between all of us on round tables, et cetera. And that doesn't stop us from doing that here either. The main thing to remember is we're in no rush over this because if you rush into something, you're not going to have a better product than you would if you had the conversations that you should have had in the first place. Okay? Now, this evening unfortunately the author of the ordinance with the regulations is ill, so he's not here tonight. And so he has asked me to ask council to table the first reading until July. And I'll ask council if they will approve to do that at the appropriate point in time in the meeting. And what that means is we will stop the three-reading process right in the beginning. We'll actually defer it out to July. And then as we move through, there may be obvious need to have more discussions, more meetings with all the stakeholders and we could bump it out for another month or two. Okay? So a lot of you have signed up tonight. Each person has three minutes and we will time it as a courtesy to the following speaker. Our ordinance for this type of thing states that the input time can be no longer than 30 minutes. So that's 10 speakers. However, if council so decides, they can suspend the rules and they can change that length of time as we progress. Or since councilmember Fowler, who wrote it, is not here and you feel that you would like him to hear your comments and I know that he wants to participate in the conversation, then you can simply let me know when I call your name. I'm going to defer until July when the first reading is rescheduled and I believe that councilmember Fowler will be finished with his illness and he'll be here. Okay.
Mayor Christie?
Yep.
Given that, I move that we suspend the rules and allow all residents who signed up to speak today, allow them the opportunity to speak if they choose to do so.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? That was seconded by Mr. Wilms.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Do a roll call vote. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Terried, 5-0.
Okay, so that's the first set. So we can speak as long as you want or you can defer until July.
It's still living in three minutes.
It's still three minutes. Excuse me. As many of you as you would like can talk for three minutes. You can't talk for as long as you like because I know some of you in here and we'd be here probably having breakfast in the morning. So apologies for that. Okay, let's start. Larry Kelly. I saw you earlier. There you are. So if you'd state your name, address, please.
My name is Larry Kelly. I'm a real estate broker here in the market and I live at 12506 Coller Lane in Bentonville. And I'm really glad that the discussion is to table the issue. I feel like that there's a lot of conversation needs to take place. There's obviously a lot of passionate opinions about these issues on both sides. And I really would like Councilman Fowler to hear some of those. So I would recommend, and I won't take all the time that I had planned, but I see some things here that are duplicitous a little bit. Noise ordinances, parking, those kinds of things are already available to take care of some of the complaints that are happening. I've been involved in short-term rental conversation with Fayetteville City Council as well as Bentonville City Council. Short-term rental seems to be the hot topic around the country. And so many municipalities are trying to figure out how to deal with that and how to address some of these issues. What was kind of interesting back like last winter when we were dealing with Fayetteville is that, you know, the real question was, how many serious complaints do you have? What are the actual issues? And when it all came out, it was actually like three complaints in three years. That seems like a solution in search of a problem. So I'm not saying that that's necessarily a situation in Bella Vista. We had vacation rentals operating here for a really long time. I don't recall there being a big deal about those things. Occasionally, sure, maybe so. But I'm in the real estate market. I never heard a lot of pushback. So those are some of the things that I think are good alternatives to what we have in front of us as an ordinance. The other conversation, I'll address that first one, is that we really feel like that short-term rentals should be allowed by right, not by conditional use. So, and if you look at, if you look at real estate law, in most places renting your property or doing those things is a right. So I don't think it should be a conditional use permit. So in addressing some of those things in the ordinance, like I said, I would really appreciate the opportunity to have a work group that would address some of these things and have stakeholders involved, folks that own short-term rentals in the market, to come and talk about how those platforms already regulate many of the issues that are mentioned here and then to offer some ideas on some of the things that aren't being addressed. You know what? That's the approach that Bentonville took. And after having their planning department and citizen input, stakeholder input, they decided not to do anything with short-term rentals. Fayetteville went the other way. They decided to go ahead and pass an ordinance to do it on a one-year basis and to see how it went.
Your time is up.
Okay. And nobody...
No, 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 sorry.
And nobody signed up for Fayetteville.
Thanks, Larry. Bill Williamson.
Good evening, gentlemen. Bill Williamson. My address is 4 Fulford Circle. I am the face of Out of Town Investment. I'm also known as Pink Lake LLC. I raised my kids here, spent 20 years from '99, stayed in a short-term rental and had to leave in 2019 due to COVID. I've got three short-term rentals, one long-term rental and three lots. Trying to decide, do I build on those lots or not? Well, let's see what happens here to decide whether we invest elsewhere. My kids were raised here, Bentonville High School, Bentonville West. The reason we have the properties is it allows us to come back here and have family, Thanksgiving, et cetera. My dad still lives here. One of my seven kids still live here. We use the properties for ourselves and then we rent them out as supplemental income. So I'd encourage you guys, you guys have a hard job. There's no doubt this is difficult. You've got to struggle with the long-term residence, short-term, long-term rental. I just encourage you to go deep. I like the idea of the committee to go deep and understand what is the ordinance is really going to do because the big fear is you'd impose a $400 fee per year, backlog inspections, go around and find out that our homes are some of the best well-maintained homes because I can tell you the capital I spend on my property is to make sure they rent and they continue to go up in value and to find out that you still have a few people that are just upset because there's somebody next door that's not their permanent residence. So without pushing all the issues, I tell you, really go deep and understand each ordinance, is that really applicable and fair to just short-term rental? Should it be applied to long-term rental? Should safety and condition of homes be applied to all residences versus just short-term rental? Because I'd bet you the short-term rental properties are some of the best well-maintained properties in the area. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Bryce Cole?
Does my time start when I get up there?
You don't have to run. It's okay.
Hey, so I'm Bryce Cole. I'm at 38 Swanage and I'm also kind of the face of the out-of-town investor guy. We bought our home about a year ago on the lake in hopes of retiring there. I'm retired from the Army, but unfortunately I still have to do like a real job for a little while. So we invested probably over 100 grand into our house. So I'm really, really hopeful that this doesn't force me to have to sell like we did from our dream home in Breckenridge when they enforced some of these similar provisions. So really just to kind of jump into it, why is this room so packed right now? Because this gets down to the fundamental issues that we all really care about. Property rights, right? Taxation without representation. All of that kind of stuff is really what we're talking about here. Is this, and I think someone mentioned it, really a solution looking for a problem? So I'd like to start off by saying I really urge us to table this for at least a year and really, really dig into it and figure out what are the real problems we're trying to solve here? And do we have to rezon someone's house to solve that problem, which I do not think we should do? And do we have to come up with some of these ordinances, right? No other business run from anybody's home is being proposed here to have any of these other ordinances, nor are long-term rentals are being proposed, right? So I think we really should look into these just a few squeaky individuals that we're really trying to placate really for whatever reasons or are these really truly problems? Because I'm really good friends with Mark and Charlotte and Kyle and his wife, my neighbors, and I just don't see these problems at all. I really want to urge everybody to consider tabling this again so that we have a much longer time to really dig into this. Several of the provisions here are just over the top and unbearable for anybody to really be able to have and are just quite unfair and unjust and go against everything that I'm hopeful that we stand for here. First of which is that the whole septic tank issue. That is just completely not based on fact whatsoever and really is kind of just something that's going to be put on only short-term rentals where regular folks that live in their home or if they long-term rent are not even being considered to have these kind of oversight on their septic tank. Our house in Breckenridge that we have, we purchased as a five-bedroom home. Turns out, the city decided to enforce a ordinance around septic tanks based on no facts whatsoever also. And we ended up having to sell that house because the house 30 years prior was permitted to be a three-bedroom house and someone had added on, right? And now it's going to cost me almost 180 grand to dig that up and put in a whole new septic system. You're going to find that that's probably very similar here, but there's data around, these homes are really being occupied only about 60 to 65% of the time for short-term rental uses. So their actual utilization of this septic system is significantly lower than a long-term rental house where they've turned their walkout basement or office into a bedroom or even they're just using the regular bedrooms. So there's just a lot of research that has to be done into that. Addition... All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Julia Dennison? Dennis Tuns, excuse me.
My name is Julia Denniston. I have two homes here. One I live in part-time. The other half of the year I live in California. And one's at 8 Plaquesden. And I have Julia's Lake House, which is at 9 Apple Cross Place. And I don't think I've ever had the cops called on me once. And one neighbor called to say there was a very loud car one time. And it ended up being one of my relatives. So it wasn't a renter. And both sides of me say they like our group better because they follow all the rules and they pick up all their litter. So I just think there's a lot of squeaky wheels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enrique. My apologies. Is the last name Numo?
Ramos.
Ramos?
Hi, Enrique Ramos. So we moved here about six years ago. Moved my family because we liked it so much. We moved here. I've done trail bill, worked as a mechanic at a bike shop. Right now we own two properties and five lots. And I mean, we're not like evil corporation, right? You know, that's our, you know, my two properties are like my paycheck every month. We take care of our properties. I take care of better the properties than my house. I have invested probably $100,000 in both houses and I have not invested $5,000 in my house. You know, we keep the properties clean, up to standard. That way we get our super host and we can get people back in our properties. You know? We got monitors for noise. So if they are making noise, they're having parties, we don't allow parties. We don't like people that have parties in our properties. So we have never had to shut down anyone, but we keep, you know, a monitor to see how much noise is in the property. You know, like we don't want someone coming that have booked our properties coming in and our place is destroyed. You know, so, and we, I live in Bentonville, so we're always checking the properties, always speaking with the neighbors. You know, I just, we have two small houses and like the fee that you guys want $400, that's a lot. You know, that's a lot for us. You know, I know you have to do like a permit and stuff like that, but you know, that's very expensive. For me at least. Like I say, we don't allow parties. We always tell the people staying, like, don't park on the street. You know, we go and check on them. You know, we put a lot of effort to be here. Three people that have stayed in my houses, months later came back and bought houses in Bella Vista because they like it so much. You know? This is an awesome place to be. And if you push all these things for us to do it, a lot of us are going to actually lose the property because we're not going to be able to afford it. You know, we cannot redesign a whole septic tank. We just can't. We don't have money for that. Then just, just look into it, you know, dig deep, make more, do some research on the problem and then let us, you know, collaborate, you know, like what can we do to make it better? Because if like the other people have said, you go and look at our properties, they're way better, way cleaner than a lot of residents. You know, we just have to keep it up to standards to make that...
Time is up.
There's a beep. Thanks very much. Damon.
Hello.
Hi.
So I might as well be pretty short because a lot of people don't realize how much money that the short-term rentals actually bring into the city of Bella Vista.
Can you give your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Damon Wallace.
And your address.
51 Perfleet Drive. But I will leave this with you. There is actually a link for the Arkansas Department of Finance Administration website that shows the breakdown for 47 different, about 47 different NICS codes. So you can kind of see what's actually bringing sales tax money into Bella Vista. So from May of last year, yeah, June of last year till May of this year, the short-term rentals, and it's classified as traveler accommodations. Well, as we know, we don't have any hotels here. So this is short-term rentals, the tax money being collected. $121,990 to the city of Bella Vista last year or within the last year from June till May of this year. So when we talk about that they're not bringing anything to the table, well, let's compare that up to some other industries that are here. So short-term rentals are in the top 25% of income generators for Bella Vista as far as by that NICS code. The, this is more than auto repair shops, which there are several of them here in Bella Vista, consumer goods retail, general merchandise stores like Dollar General. STRs bring in more money than Dollar General stores here in Bella Vista. And then also taxes collected from, guess what? We, STRs bring in more than wireless telecom, all their fees and stuff. So AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, STRs in Bella Vista actually bring in more revenue than that. So anyway, I will leave this with whoever...
Thank you.
And so I just encourage you to go to the Arkansas Department of Finance website and pull these numbers and stuff and compare that up. When we're talking about extra fees and all that, the fees are already being paid and more than enough to compensate. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
I am nervous and I'm going to probably speak really fast.
No, just your name and address.
Michelle Chiaco, 51 Perfleet Drive. According to Black's Law Dictionary, private property is protected from public appropriation over which the owner has exclusive and absolute rights. Ownership, the bundle of rights allowing one to use, manage and enjoy property, including the right to convey it to others. As an owner's private property rights consist of three basic elements. The exclusive right to choose how the property will be used, the exclusive right to any benefit derived from the property and the right to exchange property with someone else on terms that are mutually agreeable by the two parties. The city should not determine how we enjoy our property, including sharing or renting it with others. Residential renting is just that, residential renting. Residential renting is not commercial use. Scott versus Walker Supreme Court decision in Virginia established that residential renting is not commercial use. The Wisconsin Supreme Court in a 6-1 decision concluded a restrictive covenant prohibiting commercial activity did not cover STRs. The Defense Travel Management Office of the federal government says Airbnb is not considered commercial lodging facility. Two recent cases decided in Alabama and Arkansas, plus several other cases that have been considered, that have considered the argument that STRs equate to a business or commercial use have uniformly rejected the argument. The cases speak with one voice. Residential use under a subdivision declaration is not transformed to business use when an owner engages in STRs. In 2018, the Supreme Court of Arkansas also determined that STRs are residential renting. It is not a right to discriminate against the small minority of property owners who short-term rent. Concerning safety, homeownership, long-term and short-term rentals really have no, should have no different requirements for the argument of safety. If any home needs to be inspected for safety reasons, then why not require it of everybody? Not that I'm saying to do that at all. Why wouldn't all homeowners be subject to the same types of inspections to keep the public safe? Because it would be unconstitutional. Ask yourself, would this ordinance be constitutional? Remember, you made an oath to the constitutions of your state and country. Bella Vista gets tax revenue and A&amp;P from STR, not long-term rentals or resident owners. STR owners are already providing income tax, tax income for the city that pays for things that might actually bring revenue to Bella Vista instead of it all staying in Bentonville. Protecting STR is a chance to start making Bella Vista competitive with Bentonville and Bella Vista residents should be happy with this added tax coming in. And of course, you know Bentonville dropped their STR ordinance a couple of years ago. Will the city start permitting all residences? If the city does go forward with this ordinance, I would ask that existing STRs be grandfathered in. If not, it is potentially a partial condemnation of someone's property per another city attorney that I spoke with. One last thing, Airbnb, VRBO is no different than Etsy. They are platforms that collect payment and remit sales taxes for people like me. I do have a copy of the Arkansas Supreme Court decision to give you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. And you did it under three minutes, Michelle. Well done. Marge Blackwell, please. Ms. Blackwell?
Blackwell? This is me.
Come on up. You're the next contestant.
I really would like for the person that's doing the...
Ordinance?
Ordinance to hear this.
So do you want to wait until July or do you want to do it now?
Well, my problem right now is that all we've heard is the good side of it.
You need to give us your name, please, and address.
Margaret Blackwell, 49 Walter Drive.
Thank you.
When I bought in one of the nicer areas of Metfield Courts, I was told it was a 55-plus community. Our street was peaceful and well-tended. Very quiet, clean, not a lot of cars on the street, only people who lived in the area. But that has changed in the last year. We got Airbnbs. This is what I and my neighbors now have endured. One, we've had as many as 15 cars parked in the streets, driveways and lawns extending beyond where the renters were staying. Two, trash put out on the day that the renters leave, which is usually Sunday or Monday. The trash bin is crammed full. The bin lid will not shut, plus bags land on the lawn. The wall animals get into the trash and throw it all over the neighborhood before trash is picked up on Fridays. This requires concerned citizens to pick up the trash. Three, some of the owners do not know what goes on at the Airbnbs. They have turned it over to a management company that is failing at their job of managing. They have raised, they have misled with advertising the place, how many it sleeps and post no rules of the community. Four, some of the Airbnbs are not adhering to property codes, which means our homes are at risk of devaluation. This has already become a blight to our community. Five, one cannot sit on the deck because of the noise and the cigarette smoke. How did we get from a 55-plus community to an Airbnb community without voting on it? One, the people who own these Airbnbs do not live next door, are in the neighborhood and some do not live in Arkansas. Two, people who are setting rules for the Airbnbs should have firsthand knowledge of the problem of living in a neighborhood with Airbnbs. Three, there should be a vote for letting Airbnbs be established in neighborhoods before it is done. I vote no. Why it devalues my home that I bought to live in the rest of my life? The fact that Airbnbs are allowing, are being allowed in Metfield Courts has caused our community to become unsightly at times and caused distress to homeowners.
Marge, your time is up.
I understand.
Thank you.
The constant noise.
Thank you, Marge. That's good. It's not easy standing up here. Mike Millian? You going to defer?
Yes.
Thank you. We finally get to meet after talking so many times on the phone. Sean Douglas? All right, thank you. Peggy Lucas?
My name is Peggy Lucas. I live at 23 Duesbury. And I'm not an STR owner and I am not against STRs. I've lived next to STRs in Bella Vista and have no issue, but that's not the case now. And I think that we could be dealing with the 80/20 rule where 20% of the STR owners are causing 80% of the problems. So have a deep respect for my fellow residents and, but I think we need to acknowledge that there is an issue with 20% of the STR owners. The issue could be straight enforcement. So, and it's largely surrounded around parking and noise. And so who do residents call when, in our particular case, we have a four-bedroom, three-bath B&amp;B who advertises 17 people. When 17 people come to a... When 17 people come to a four-bedroom place, you've got the noise, you've got the parking issues. It just so happens that the parking, the driveway is adjacent to a curb in the street, so urgency vehicles can't get through there, we can't get through there, and there's no acknowledgement that something needs to be fixed. So, we need somebody's help, whoever it is. We need to be able to call the right people. We need to know that people are being accountable. Otherwise, the resident is gonna keep calling, keep calling, keep calling, and out of respect for all residents, we just need something to occur related to enforcement.
Great. Thank you, Peggy. Brad Pope. And your address first, please.
Address is 4 Hillcrest Lane, that's in Bentonville, and name is Brad Pope.
Pope, thank you.
You bet. So, there's been a lot of conversations, like top level, about different issues, but I think for me, septic is one of the biggest issues that's out there, so I wanted to take a deeper dive into that and really talk about my Bella Vista septic education. So, we moved to the area about 14 years ago, and we had a septic tank for the first time. I had owned multiple houses, all on sewer. You flush the toilet, it goes away, no problem. Four years later, after not doing anything, all of a sudden, we had to replace the tank, and actually, I got off pretty easy with the amount of maintenance that needed to be done. Fast forward, a couple of years ago, bought another house in Bella Vista and went up and took a shower in the upstairs, went right down to the basement and mopped it all up because the person that was there before me, long-term resident, didn't take care of the septic tank, okay? I ended up taking off a week of work to go, you know, jet out the leach lines, et cetera, get it all fixed, you know, pretty expensive, but got it done. Third property that we bought, all of a sudden, they're buying, they're selling it, I said, I've got one condition, right, it's a hot market. I want to have the septic tank inspected, right? And it was underneath a hot tub underneath the deck, but we opened it up, okay, now I could buy the property. I say all that to say, the big difference between the first property and the last property isn't because, like in the first property, I was malicious or negligent, I just didn't know, right? By the third property, I knew. So, I said, the first thing is education for, not, not just, you know, STR owners, but long-term, you know, owners as well, permanent residents. If you've never been on septic, especially with a lot of the younger folks that are coming to the area, you gotta teach, right? You gotta educate. And the second part of that is when we talk about, how do we really fix the septic issue? You know, it's one thing to educate, you've gotta have the right regulations in place. It's not by saying, okay, it's a, it's a two-bedroom septic system, therefore, for people. It's what's the throughput of the system? How do we make sure that the system is working correctly? And put regulations in place like, hey, they need to make sure that they pump the system every X number of years, right? And they, they need to maintain the system. That's what's gonna fix it. Since, you know, I went through my septic issues, fixed the problem with the right maintenance, no issues. I think that's what we need to focus on for septic. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And Maria Pope.
Well, I'm Maria Pope, and I live at the same place as Brad, at 4 Hillcrest Lane, but we own houses here in Bella Vista on Lake Windsor and on Lake Avalon. You gentlemen know me as the woman who wrote you the longest email you have ever received, extremely thorough, logical, well-thought-out, and so, three minutes is really not long enough to recap it, so I'll just reiterate my comments with this. Gentlemen, I understand and support the desire to have a registry of STR properties here in Bella Vista and a registry of their owners for city use, city use. We should be able to easily get in touch with any owner, long-term, permanent, or short-term, and I agree. But I will also say that this ordinance in its entirety was written with a lack of comprehensive understanding of short-term rentals and how they operate, as well as a lack of complete understanding of septic systems. I personally have spent over eight hours corresponding with septic engineers and geologists, with four kids running around in the background, this week. My most interesting finding is that septic regulations are actually built around actual water usage, not bedrooms. Per BBB, a two-bedroom septic, like my own at 750-gallon tank, is rated for 300 gallons of water per day. My home comfortably sleeps 14, at over 3,500 square feet, not too many people in there, and averages but 144 gallons per day, less than half of my daily allowance. Wow, that's with 14 people, not with four, as this ordinance is proposing. In my peak months, at 100% occupancy, we averaged 245 gallons per day, well below my limits. Especially with regular pumping every few years, my system is at less of a risk of failure than my uneducated STR neighbors, who are lovely, but they don't know, they've never dealt with septic before. In fact, you see my guests, as well as most guests, are using our houses as but a place to stay. They are coming here on their vacations, dining out, shopping local, and using very little water. Gentlemen, this ordinance's suggestion of restricting occupancy is based upon fear, not upon fact, and most definitely not upon science. To protect our city, I will echo what my husband said, the answer is not limiting the capacity of STRs and their underused septic system, but it's educating all Bella Vista neighbors on best septic practices, including regular inspections and servicings. I ask you, please reconsider this portion of the ordinance with a scientific eye, and please let me know if you need any contacts, I'd be happy to send them your way.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Richard Heffron.
I live at 67 Rath Drive. We've, we've been in Bella Vista for about five and a half years, been in northwest Arkansas for 18 years. Moved my parents to Bella Vista because it's a great place. Last year, moved my in-laws to Bella Vista, it's a great place. We have eight properties in Bella Vista. Three are short-term rentals, one's a long-term rental, and we have three undeveloped lots that we're considering building on as well. About three and a half years ago, Mayor Christie, you came to Kiwanis meeting, Bella Vista Kiwanis, and you talked about the development in Bella Vista, and a large amount of what your, your conversation was is just how great that people are coming in, visiting Bella Vista, really being drawn to Bella Vista by the trails. And when you finished your, your address, I'd asked the question, well, Mayor Christie, what are we gonna do with all the people to retain that revenue that they're bringing in? Do we have plans for hotels? And I don't know if you remember your response at the time, I'll tell you, it was, there's not a lot of flat land in Bella Vista to build hotels. What we need is more vacation rentals. And within two months, we just bought our first, excuse me, bought our first two homes to convert to vacation rentals, based on that suggestion. And I've seen a stat recently, I think we've more than doubled the number of short-term rentals over the last, what, three, four years? And it's, there's a reason for that. There's a demand, if there was not a demand for housing in Bella Vista, we wouldn't be here doing business. And so, I, I have read in entirety the ordinance. I, I find it onerous, I found it restrictive, some of the regulations, and would, would really like further consideration. I, I want to keep my vacation rentals here. We own another one in Rogers, we own another one in Garfield, and they don't have such onerous regulation or restrictions, and, and I would rather just keep them here rather than divesting in Bella Vista.
Thank you. Mrs. Heffron? I'm sorry, I can't read the first name. Is it Margie?
Vanji.
No?
Vanji.
Vanji? Okay.
My name is Vanji Heffron, and I live at 67 Rath, and that was my husband that just spoke, and I would appreciate, thank you for letting us speak to you today. I would just like to speak from the perspective of a host, which is what I consider myself. I manage all of our properties, that's kind of my primary job, and it is very extremely important to me that all of my neighbors are happy with our homes. So, to the two ladies who have spoken and have had bad experiences, I am dreadfully sorry that you're dealing with that. We have had two phone calls ever, over multiple properties in three years, from neighbors that were upset, and we immediately dealt with that. I've also gotten phone calls about stray cats, I've gotten phone calls about limbs that are coming down, I've gotten all kinds of phone calls. I've also had neighbors who said, thank you so much for purchasing this house, it has been in disrepair for years, and the three properties we purchased, we have all completely redone them, they are not the same property, they've added to the value of the neighborhood. And the second thing I would like to speak to is the perspective of my guests. We have probably upwards of 30% of our guests are coming here for the bike trails. Bella Vista got 100% behind all of this, and it's wonderful, they do have to have a place to stay. Most of them definitely prefer a house, they're coming in groups, they're taking showers, they go out the back door onto the trail. They also spend their money in Bella Vista, they shop primarily at Allen's and Harps, I will tell you, because I know, they ask me where to shop, where's the closest? And they like shopping local, they would prefer that to the supercenter. They also go to Gusano's a lot, and Lake Point, and the Country Club. They spend their money here because they're staying here, and they return. I have returned guests because they love the atmosphere, and I would love to keep the atmosphere of Bella Vista the way it is. I, I think once we start regulating, it can really get out of hand and become burdensome, and that causes me to have to raise my rates, there's a whole plethora of problems. But at this point, I would say the feedback from people staying in these houses is they absolutely love the opportunity of staying in a neighborhood and being a part of it. And, and since I still have a little time, if you do decide to add some sort of regulation, it would be my encouragement to at least have a page that maybe educates new hosts a little bit. You can definitely call cities, if there's too much noise, I mean, as an owner, I've been able to deal with it, but if there's excessive parking, the police can come and deal with it if your guest is not willing to submit, and they mostly are, they're usually good, you talk to them, they're, they're cooperative. And, you know, even things like how you market your property can change the kind of guests that you have, and that's an education thing that I have learned in the last three and a half years. Thank you.
Thanks, Vanji. Stacy Lamb.
Stacy Lamb, 16582 Birch Lane, Rogers, Arkansas. I emailed you guys a letter last Friday, and I did not hear back from any of you, so I had planned to read it to you tonight, but since this conversation is gonna continue, I think that I will refrain and make sure that you get it later. But I do want to say that I'm a short-term rental owner, an STR consultant, and I'm also an Airbnb-endorsed community leader. As with any growing or changing industry, I fully understand the need for regulation, but I have deep concerns about the current proposed regulations from several different angles, and I urge you to seek real information, accurate data, and look at the actual long-term impact that these proposed regulations will have on your city, on your businesses, on your citizens, and even the travelers wishing to stay in Bella Vista. The majority of STR investors and homeowners are not so naive to think that this industry won't or, or doesn't require some level of regulation and standards. However, I urge you to continue to table these discussions until some solid research and discussion is done. I would love the opportunity to brainstorm with any of you, I could probably answer any question related to data when it comes to the STR industry, and I would be willing to do that for free, and as much time as you need to answer any of the questions. And I think, you know, in the end, this information will allow Bella Vista to grow, to stay safe and attractive for travelers, and also for people like, like all these guys back here that are willing to invest millions of dollars into Bella Vista, because in the end, the citizens of Bella Vista benefit from a successful STR presence. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Whitmer.
I'm Ed Bur.
Thank you. Demma Whitmer.
I'm Ed Bur.
Thank you. Kim Lindsay.
I'm Ed Bur.
Thank you. Linda Lloyd.
Good evening, I'm Linda Lloyd, I live at 102 Fairway Drive, and I'd like to applaud all of the STR owners that are here and obviously take good care of their properties. The problem is not with these folks, the problem is with the people who are not here and do not care. Just yesterday, we had an incident at 6 Ashwell Lane on Lake Brittany, where there was a lot of loud noise, a lot of profanity, a lot of illegal fireworks being set off, and the police had to be called. I looked up the owner of that property, and it's an LLC in Joplin. So, there's no way to find out who to contact. So, that is where a lot of the problems are, so the neighbors have to call the police. So, I would encourage all of the STR owners here who are responsible to work proactively with the city to help us put together an ordinance that will solve the problem of these absentee owners. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Thomas Thompson.
Good evening, my name is Tommy Thompson, I live at 3 Clodore Lane in Bella Vista. Been here for 16 years. Recently, the house next to us, which is on the lake, was purchased and turned into an Airbnb. I'm not familiar with all of the real estate laws, I'm not familiar with septic systems. I know, as one of the first gentlemen said, that parking and issues like that probably are already on the books and addressed in a certain way. I would like to see Doug when he's available, but there are some things that are common sense as well. For instance, the house next to me, which I helped the fellow that owned before renovate, was a two-bedroom house turned into a three-bedroom house. Now, that septic system, regardless of, and I'm sure you're gonna say it was grandfathered, but the house is being advertised as accommodating 19 people. Common sense says that that septic system can't handle that. As far as that goes, they've just started to rent, and by the way, if I get winded, my wife defers hers.
No, we'll do them both.
Thank you. The first set of people that came there, there were 13 cars in the driveway.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry, I'll get it right up here. First set of people that came had 13 cars in the driveway. That's many, too, many, too many people, as far as I'm concerned. The second set, this has all occurred since about April, when he first started doing Airbnb. The second set was a bunch of cars with young boys from Texas and Oklahoma. The first pickup truck that pulled up got out and urinated in front of the door. Now, I don't consider that very healthy, very nice for my wife to look out of the window and see some guy doing that. So, it's things like that that happen, and I know that there are other people in this place that have rented, the, the big ones, the big place on the lake, I know the neighbors in those areas, and that same thing has happened, people partying, urinating, partying, urinating. So, thank you very much. Anyway, so, I really think that...
That's it, Bill, it's time for your wife.
Pardon?
That's it for your three minutes.
Well, my wife defers.
Cynthia?
No, you can't do that, Mayor.
Okay.
She gets the other three.
Cynthia, come on up.
She defers it to me.
I'm afraid she can't do that.
Sorry.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll stop there.
But I have made a note that you'd like to speak to Mr. Fowler.
Okay, but you get the idea.
Lindsey White.
Hi, my name is Lindsey White. I live at 102 Lane in Bella Vista. I'm here in behalf of both being a resident, and I also work for homeowners of the short-term rentals. Bella Vista was founded in the early 1900s as a vacation destination place. Wasn't a retirement community. It wasn't a biking community. It was because it was beautiful. And that's why everyone comes here and enjoys this. I can speak for a few of my homeowners that I work for who are retired or soon to be retired. They have these homes. They live in them partially. And when they go and visit their family, they're able to short-term rent them, which supplements their income and helps a great deal, you know, for that. I do have other people who are potentially going to retire here. This is their investment. It is paying the bills until it's time for them to retire here. They have invested a great deal of money in keeping this property up. They are purchasing homes that I really don't know that regular residents would be purchasing, really. So it is definitely coming in as an income for Bella Vista. Nobody wants to have a hotel here, you know? We all are introverts in Bella Vista. We like it quiet, lights out at 9 o'clock, you know? I think it is very important that there is a point, a local point of communication when it comes to the other people who live around the homes and the short-term rentals, just because of issues, you know? I do also wonder about the sewage issue. I have had three, four, four homes who are townhouses, two of them being on the lake. They keep, all of these houses have been newly remodeled, you know, everything from the ground up. And we've had continuous line issues. Two of them near the lake, it's really kind of, when I have people come out to clear the lines, it's really confusing to them of how to even access the lines, because they're in between other townhouses, and there's no access point for them. So they end up having to pull the toilet from the bottom of the townhouse to find the issue in the line. And usually, the issue in the line is nothing even big. It's like one flushable toilet, you know, paper. The flushable wipes are not flushable wipes and galvanized pipes, you know? So if money was being put into place... Sorry.
Sorry. But is Maria still here? Perhaps you could link up, because you have extensive research?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. And thank you very much for speaking this evening. Okay, Kevin Foss.
Hello. My name's Kevin Foss. I live at 30 Carroll Drive. I own 17 lots in Bella Vista and two houses. I have a few points to make. Some of them are in some literature that I'd seen at the earlier informational meeting that we had here. I would just like to say that in addition to living here, and it's mostly why most of us moved here, Bella Vista is a recreation destination. And as such, you would expect to see a higher rate of short-term rentals. I do think there's probably a delineation between townhouses for short-term rental and single-family houses for short-term rental. I would like to see if a lot of these so-called complaints are coming from the townhouses versus the single-family. Mrs. Blackwell in Medfield Courts, those are townhouses. So I could imagine that living wall-to-wall with a short-term rental could be a different experience than a single-family home short-term rental. There's bad apples in people using Airbnbs, as well as people that are permanent residents here. We've seen bad behavior by permanent residents as well. Some of the parking violations that are attributed as if it was just because of the Airbnb's increase could also just be attributed to there's plainly more citizens living here. I'm curious if other home businesses are being regulated. For instance, dog breeding is allowed in Bella Vista. And talk about a nuisance, I actually know a lady with 16 dogs. This is my way to make a living, to generate a retirement income, and I would vote for a no condition for use. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Is it Lauren Gentry?
I'm at Burr.
Thank you. And did I pronounce that correctly? I'm sorry. I did?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. That ends the citizen input. I want to thank all of you. Sir?
I signed up on a sheet, but I can't read the sheet. I'm sorry.
Ah, there's another one. Hidden in the back.
We're not done yet.
Bill Williamson? I thought you'd already spoken, Bill.
He did.
Okay. I guess you got on there twice. Jesse Keller?
Hi. I'm Jesse Keller, 6 Davin Tree Lane in Bella Vista. I was here last week during your work session, and it became clear to me, with all due respect, that y'all really have no idea how an Airbnb or VRBO short-term rental works. I would invite you to pick one in Bella Vista. Treat yourself to a staycation. Find out how one works. Get wild and crazy, if you want, and break house rules, too, and see what happens. You'll find that there is usually a list of house rules which miraculously line up with the POA rules and are, go even beyond that. And so I think you would be surprised how one actually works. There've been a lot of complaints. Having a lot of people somewhere isn't really a valid reason to regulate somebody else. If there's a problem, that's one thing, but just there being a lot of people, sorry, that's just not a reason to encroach on my rights in my home. Short-term rentals, as you'll find out if you go and stay in one, are self-regulating. I am there, I've done long-term rentals for years and years and years, and I'm just starting to do short-term rentals. I've had far more problems with long-term rentals because I think I'm not in there every few days to inspect and to see exactly what's going on. And so I'm there so often that I can see exactly what's going down in my short-term rentals. Owners are inherently incentivized to make sure that these homes are beautiful, that they are well-maintained, that people are following the rules. And the tenants are likewise incentivized to behave well. Because if they don't, they also are reviewed every time, are able to be reviewed every time they stay somewhere, to, on how they were as tenants. And if you have a bad review or two, people will not, they will not rent to you. They do not want to rent to people who are bad either. We want good people that are in there because it's less of a headache. I'm sure some of you may have owned a business. You want to deal with people who are going to give you as little headache as possible, right? Many of the regulations are focused, I feel like, on hypothetical situations. It feels a little bit Minority Report to me, like, well, you know, he's probably going to commit a crime, so we'll go ahead and punish him for that now. Something that I was concerned about also with the layers and layers of government that we have in Bella Vista is the addition of another entire department to manage this entire short-term rental situation, which is what the excuse was, given why it had to be a $400 fee, to have another department.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thanks for the time, gentlemen. My name's Wyn Peterson. I live at 17 Folkingham Lane. And I support regulation. I mean, it's important for us to have regulations and understand how we need to behave as we live among each other. But regulations also cause friction and generally cost time and money. My wife and I and kids moved here, five kids, 16 years ago, and we've absolutely loved Bella Vista. Think it's a fantastic place. When we moved here, it was clear to us that we were moving to a town that wasn't normal, right? I mean, vacation rental signs were all over the place. It was clear that a lot of residents lived here all the time, but a whole lot of houses were owned by people who didn't live here year-round and did rent their property out. And we kind of knew coming in that that's what we were moving into. I think Bella Vista is the realization of a dream that DeCoopers had, as a great place to get away. It's been a great place for us to live and get away from sort of normal, modern city life. And naturally, being in a place like that, it attracts other people to come and get away for a few days as well. Vacation rentals business was then, is now, and I think will continue to be, a fairly significant aspect of life in Bella Vista. And I believe we have regulations and rules and laws in place that address the unique challenges that that presents. I was here last week. We went through a lot of the proposed regulations, and it seems like the rules that we already have in place address pretty much all of those issues. We've heard parking. We've heard noise. We've heard all these things. And it's like, I think we have rules in place already that address those. And as property owners, I live here and I also have a short-term rental, we agreed to live by those rules when we bought property here. And if people aren't living by those rules, let's take resources and dedicate them toward enforcement of those rules rather than creating new regulations. I'll echo the words of others that, man, I feel terrible for the people who live by a short-term rental when they've had negative experiences. In our property, we have a book, and it says very clearly, she says, like, "This is our neighborhood. We like it here because it's quiet. Keep it quiet, or you're going to hear from us." If your property has a problem, like a broken window, or a limb that's fallen on a tree, or ants, or a dishwasher that doesn't work, you find out very quickly that you get a one- or two-star review. Hey, great place, but this didn't work. And your property, that's an income property, becomes an empty house. So you're very motivated as an owner to fix those things and keep the house up very nice. I think government naturally tends to just grow as we, in good faith, try to put regulations in place to solve problems. But I think any time we propose a new regulation, we have to ask ourselves, what problems is this new regulation going to solve that existing regulations don't already address? And if we can't ask that question pretty clearly, then I would say, let's not put more regulation in place. Let's spend more time and effort toward enforcement and finding out how, like the woman said earlier, how do we contact? Who do we contact so that we can solve problems when those regulations are being broken? Thank you.
Thank you, Wyn.
Hello, counsel. Thank you so much for the time today. I am standing here...
Your address, please.
I'm Jessica Green. I live at 5 Rogan Circle. I am standing here today because I came to an Airbnb in Bella Vista and went, oh, my lord, this is amazing. And I proceeded to buy two lots to build two more homes on and a dilapidated, long-term rental that needed $57,000 in repairs for me to move in and to live in. I had to clean it and restore it before I could even sleep in it. It was that disgusting, okay? I just want to make sure I paint the picture real well. So I am a homeowner. I am a landowner. I am a business entrepreneur. I am a NICA coach for your Lincoln Junior High. I am a cycling guide for all of your trails, and I am also a super host and have been since 2018. I came from Houston, Texas. You do not get super hosts by looking pretty, talking sweet, and being nice. You get it through hard labor, amazing reviews. You all received an email from me. And I was here last week, and I saw that you guys needed to actually educate yourselves. You don't know what Airbnb is. Everybody calls Airbnb Airbnb, but they may be talking about VRBO or other different platforms. I want to encourage you to educate yourself. Becoming a super host takes time. And in regards to super host status, we are required to have safety precautions in our house. We have to have carbon monoxide detectors, fire extinguishers, other services. I even go above and beyond what Airbnb says because I do not want anything bad going on in my house. And I also rent out my basement, so I live above. Why on God's green earth would I want something bad going on downstairs? You know, I used to be a police officer. I think I'll go take care of it. My husband's retired military. We are here to bring our friends, our fellow cyclists, and other lovers of nature to this amazing place. We are also required to collect taxes. We are required to have insurance. We are required to have a no-parties policy. I please, I please ask you to take the time to understand how these platforms actually operate. Some of your violators are not only violating your ordinances, but they are violating their own platforms. And you can report them, and no one wants to lose super host. One bad review takes 100 to fix. That's a pretty big standard of excellence. So please, please take the time to educate yourself. If you do have a problem, Airbnb is the platform I use because it is the most professional, in my opinion. They also have a portal called City Portal. So if you have a problem, you can go to cityportal.com, and you can file your complaint there.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good evening.
Hopefully. Well, Nathaniel Green, 5 Rogan Circle. As my platoon sergeant said, it's always morning somewhere. So one of the main things I really wanted to bring up was that, from what I heard, once we first moved here, was about the history of Bella Vista. That started out, as was already said, as a vacation, as a resort, that there was a lot of different folks that came here because of the natural beauty and the desire to live here. And the short-term rental, as it exists today, is really just an outgrowth of that same idea. It's just used in a different platform. So there's already some kind of existing vacation rental organizations, you know, catalogs, books, all those things in the past. Airbnb, VRBO, all those things are just that same idea just taken into the future. And as my wife said, and has been said by plenty of other folks, is that if you don't maintain what the standards of that program are, you're not going to be able to even maintain that business because of the simple fact that people don't want to stay with you. So as, again, I'll say, has been said by multiple people, is that there are existing regulations, laws that Bella Vista has, that the county has, that the state has, that cover the majority of things that are being talked about, whether or not it's any kind of complaints, the tax issues that have already been hit on, that there are taxes that are being gained through these different programs and in turn brought back to the city. So that there's plenty of positives while there are negatives, because people do have problems. And as has been said, a private list of the folks that operate some kind of short-term rental that is only used by the city as opposed to being public, because one of the main things about a public list now means that, well, if I'm a criminal, I can go to that list and find out where all these properties are and just look that most likely they're going to be empty during the week. I can go in there and rob that place. That's the biggest hazard there on just that one issue. So there's plenty of things that can be addressed with, like I said, the existing regulations. So hopefully, I'm close to time.
Has it hit yet? Okay. So one of the other things I did do is I was reading through that, the published
ordinance going through, and I did my own research. And it seems like a lot of the ideas that were put forth in that ordinance go back to at least one research paper that was written by a UNC professor that went back to 2015. And 2015 was a lot different time period than 2022. Things have changed a whole lot across the entire country when it comes to short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Gel.
I'm at Burr.
Thank you. Jill Wilks.
My name is Jill Wilks. I live at 43 Cargill Drive. My name is Jill Wilks, and I live at forty-three Cardill Drive. And I agree with a lot of the things that have been said.
Into the mic, please. Thank you.
I agree with a lot of the things that have been said for both sides. I work with the company that manages short-term rentals, and we do a lot of work with vetting our guests to make sure that we have good guests that come in. And if they are not good, then we do not allow them to rent with us again. One of the things that I, that hasn't been addressed is I think there was something saying about a twenty-nine-day limit on the rentals. We have a lot of guests that their house, they live locally, their house is burned down, they need to stay somewhere for, you know, six, eight months to a year, but don't have furniture, they don't want to have to go and purchase all of that. And so, and, you know, nurse, travel nurses that come for, you know, a ninety-day stay for, at the hospitals, and people that have special assignments with, you know, Walmart or some of the big companies that need a longer-than-twenty-nine-day stay. So if that's something that could be kind of considered as renegotiated a bit. But that's all I have.
Good. Thank you.
I'm Terry McConnell. I live at eighty-five Four Far Drive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really sorry that the author is, or disappointed that he's not here tonight because, as much as anything, I wanted to commend him on what I think is a well-written ordinance. I'd like to commend the whole council. I think you've done a lot of work on this. I'll take exception to the people who think you don't know what you're doing because I like the ordinance. I would not think that there's a great reason to continue to table and postpone this. I think something needs to be done. You know, it's not a solution looking for a problem. We have a vacation rental house right next door to us, and it is a problem. It's, I've sent letters in the past to the council when you had your workshop. I'm not going to go into all those again, but we've had a lot of problems. A lot of trespassing, unruliness, loud parties, obscenity, some of the things that other people mentioned. I've heard from the people that own these tonight about how much time, how much work, how much money they put into them. Well, that's probably true. Why would they have a problem going ahead and doing what this ordinance asks? The application process is not that difficult. It's not that expensive. If you're going to do it, go ahead and do it right. Section five, limits and restrictions, I brought it up here, it's three sentences. This ordinance is not to put people out of business, it's just to regulate and make sure they're doing it right. I don't know how you can look at three sentences of limits and restrictions and consider that onerous. It's just not. You know, it talks about how many guests they can have. You've heard from other people, overcrowding these houses is a problem. You know, and I can go to the websites, I look, and they've taken what appears to be a storage room and crowded a bed into it. There's no windows, there's no second way out, there's one door in and out of a bedroom, which I don't think is allowed anyway. The inspections would bring that to bear. I go to websites, I see another room that has seven beds in it. I mean, how is that something you're going to find in a single-family residence, and how is that safe? Put seven beds in one large room and call it a dorm room? The restrictions on parties, corporate meetings, similar activities, related parties, that would solve a lot of problems because people are renting these houses for bachelorette parties, bachelor parties, weddings, corporate events. You know, two weeks ago, they were, the caterer told me they were cooking for a hundred people.
Thanks, Terry. Appreciate it. Grace Chan.
I really wanted to give my time to him and to finish. She wanted, trying to say, Grace Chan, twenty-eight, Briny Land. I never thought I would be here until last night. I wake up at eleven PM, somebody shoot a fire walk, and try to go back to sleep until eleven-thirty, I call police. And police say, yeah, some officer should be on site soon, just give it a few minutes. This is just last night, okay? We moved from Texas. It's, I really pleased at these places, friendly, I mean, peaceful, relaxed, you don't worry anything. You can just open the window, curtain at nighttime, don't worry. But since April first this year, we actually built a five-brand-new house from last year to this year. They opened two brand-new Airbnb in front of my house on each side. They can have a car, people have been talking about four cars to the ten cars on the corner side, on the two side. And we go out, have to watch, before watch, all the truck building a house, and then we watch all these renters going in the house. And they, they have loud music until ten. And I know some, a lot of super hosts are here, they put sound monitor and the voice or noise. They should put outside the yard too, because you can hear at nighttime, it's the music outside. A dog, the dog barking too, because of noise, I guess. Just a lot going on, seems like. We want to know, it's a regulation, who can call in this case? I could not even know who owned this house, and only call police. I don't want to call police at eleven-thirty or one AM. And plus, there's so many cars around my corner at eleven, twelve, one AM. I don't know, they're just coming back from whatever, vacation. So it's just, I have closed all my curtains at nighttime, I have to just be watching my house now. One night, my neighbor texted me, is that okay? Somebody dumped your trash into their truck. I say, it's nine-thirty. I say, why somebody want my trash? And she said, they are outside. So I open the door, I say, hey, hello? I'm live here. And she, they say, there's two young guy walking down with my trash can, say, oh, we just dumped your trash, we work for Airbnb. I say, I'm not Airbnb, this is my house. They say, oh, oh, we got a wrong house. It's just, maybe just one incident, but it's just, it totally changed my life, kind of like, I just, it's okay, people come to enjoy same lifestyle we enjoy. But we want to know, is that a regulation? Can they park anywhere, like the water park? Can they respect others, neighbor here? That's all I want to address. Who can call?
Great. Thank you, Grace. James Schlenke. My apologies if I didn't pronounce it correctly.
After sixty-five years, I've reached it. I'm James Schlenke, I live at twenty-three Harborough Lane. I live directly across Lake Brittany from Sixth Ashwell Lane, which last night was so much fun to be across from. As I stand on my porch with my grandchildren, that woke me up because there's a bunch of noise going on, we got to listen to the language that I used to use when I worked on offshore rigs, floating into the ears of about ten-year-old grandkids. Drunk behavior going on, throwing things, then they start setting off artillery-style fireworks. What would I do? I call 911. Police show up, two units outside, setting off artillery shells over the hoods of the police units. As far as I could tell, no citations issued, no arrests made. Noise continued on afterward for another two hours. The problem here is, we have people, the business model of Airbnb, our short-term rental, is make money fast. You make money on a weekend that you would have to work for a whole month to get from a long-term rental. It's just, if you're not going to enforce the rules of the city, you cannot set off fireworks before January third, you can't, you have to stop shooting fireworks, July fifth, July third, July fifth. If you're not going to enforce it, the only message you're sending is, come to Bella Vista, do whatever you want, we don't care. At that, the message you need to send is, fine, have short-term rentals, but your tenants need to be vetted, they need to obey the laws, and if they disobey the laws, you probably going to have some skin in the game as well. You should pay the fine as much as they do. In fact, make it to where the STR owners have to pay double or triple the fines that the people that disobeyed the law. The old congressional scholar once said, the right for you to swing your fist ends at the point it beats my face. The way we're learning things right now with the situation is, is people are profiting from making money, or profiting from the lifestyle that we all invest our hard-earned money to get away. I came here to get away from Dallas. That is not the, now, this isn't the first incident on Lake Brittany that's happened. This is the third time in three years I've had to endure that. And it's because no one is vetting their clients. No one cares. The guy that owns the house is in Joplin, Missouri. I spoke to them. We'll look into it, so sorry. Well, great. My ten-year-old now knows, my ten-year-old grandson now knows MF, mofo, you know. Why are we wanting to degrade the style of life that we all came here to enjoy? I mean, all you're doing is you're importing the crap we came to get away from in Bella Vista. And you're allowing someone to profit from that import. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Bill Rogers. Mr. Rogers.
The councilman who wrote this, is he going to listen to this recording?
I would hope so, yes. It's on the TV as well as the recording here.
Will he watch it, though? He'll see it?
He has the option to see it, you bet.
I would hope he would. Okay, thank you. So my name is Bill Rogers. I live in downtown Bentonville, but I own a home at forty-two Lavender Circle Drive, as well as a lot next door to that. I, my main focus I'd like to have on this would be two things. The first is, and other people have spoken this as well, before we start talking about adding a whole bunch of new regulations, just enforce what's on the books. This is actually heartbreaking. I own an STR, and that's heartbreaking to hear that this man had to endure this. And my neighbor has my phone number. He knows he can call me anytime, day or night, and it pains me when I get a call and he's had any problem with one of my guests. It really bothers me. So let's enforce what's on the books. For the cops to show up and not do anything about this, I don't know the whole story, but that's troubling to me. So enforce what's on the book, whether it's trash, whether it's noise, you know, whatever it may be. Let's enforce what's on the books. Let's take care of the bad apples, because we're not all bad apples, right? So let's take care of the people who are bad apples, focus our resources on where the problems are, not on everybody. So that'd be my first comment. Let's just enforce the existing codes, let's take care of the bad apples and not worry about the people that are doing things correctly. The second thing is just on a couple comments about what's in the verbiage here, is that some of this is a bit arbitrary. So, for example, on the safety requirements, and, sir, with all due respects, I see you're in here, it says, safety requirements will be established by the mayor's, or the mayor's designate. Why should there, why should you or your designate be establishing new safety regulations? Again, we have safety regulations. Let's enforce the ones we got across to everybody, not just short-term rentals, long-term rentals, you know, residents. We should all live by the same code. Everybody's home should be equally safe. And I'm comfortable saying that because my home is, you can look at my reviews online, it's called the Lakeside Treehouse. If I had a problem with safety, you'd know about it. I got almost nothing but five-star reviews. Second thing, another thing that's a bit arbitrary, occupancy limits. So why should there be, and other people have spoken to this too, why should there be occupancy limits predicated on the septic system for short-term rentals but for nobody else? So you could theoretically have a situation where, for example, I've got a four-bedroom home, okay? That could have, per these rules, we could have eight people in there, okay? But somebody next door could have fifteen people with the exact same septic system, but they're not in STR, so not a problem. That doesn't seem right to me. The rules should apply equally to everybody, they should be enforced equally across the board. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, I think I got it right this time, that's it. Nope.
I came here about three minutes before me started at work, I got back, but I didn't get the list here.
I was fifth on the list and I didn't call.
One, two, three, four, five. Lori Frank?
Yes.
Okay. Come on up.
I'm on now?
Sure.
I thought it was because I signed in blue, but I wasn't.
Invisible ink.
My name is Lori Frank. I'm at Eight Itebury, that's I-T-E-T-B-U-R-Y. No one ever knows how to spell it. I'm a hundred percent retired veteran. My spouse and I own both short-term rentals and long-term. We use VRBO as well as Airbnb, but ninety-nine percent of our guests are through Airbnb. I'm still waiting for my STR to pay a bill, and I'm really looking forward to making that fast money. All kidding aside, I've been doing this for two and a half years. We just moved here, not even a year ago, and I'm still waiting for it to pay off. But I've also put a lot of money into it. Through Airbnb, we are super hosts. We have amassed over a hundred and eight reviews and carry a nine-point-nine-four grade. We have professional lawn care weekly and pest control quarterly. We have a short-term rental insurance policy on our property, we meet all safety standards and then some. Airbnb pays our taxes to the state. We have had our septic tank pumped twice in two and a half years. Noise is not an issue at my place, and if it is, I'm the first to know. Why? Because I live next door, luckily, to my rental. Trash is not an issue, again, because I live next door. We have parking for four cars and four cars only. That is explicitly set in my rules. And if they have more than that, they find another place to park. Parking has never been an issue on my street. Our daily water usage for the past two years is a hundred and thirteen gallons a day. That is well below what I'm required. We are unable to obtain our original septic permit. Why? Because the house was built prior to nineteen-seventy-seven, and all records prior to that were destroyed in some fire. To do so and get a septic permit, I would have to hire a septic designer to trace all of our lines and then submit as a brand-new build. This will cost me a lot of money and time. Last October, we spent ten thousand dollars on a septic grinder. The plumbers told me that it would chew up a pair of jeans if it went through that process. In December of last year, we get ten thousand dollar upgrades to the STR. This allowed us to open up our downstairs to more beds, and we take twelve. Some people would say that's not a true bedroom. Your permit will hurt us financially. We have signs in every bathroom and the kitchen educating guests on what can't go down the system.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate it. Now, there were two of you that came in late. Was that it? Okay, so we have to have, it's a motion to accept the last two to speak?
Suspend the rules and allow them to speak if that's what you want.
Okay. Could I have your last names, please?
Humphrey.
Humphrey? And you, sir?
Rose.
Rose? Okay, entertain a motion to suspend the rules allowing measures Humphrey and Rose to address council?
Yes.
For three minutes?
For three minutes?
Yes.
Not as long as you'd like, sorry.
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Second by Mr. Snow.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey, you're on deck. And could we have your address as well, please, when you get to the mic?
Hi, my name is Logan Humphrey, and I live on two-one-one-nine West Lawrence Circle in Fayetteville. So I am a local vacation rental, short-term rental manager. I manage over a hundred and twenty vacation rentals only in northwest Arkansas. We manage ten properties in Bella Vista, about thirty in Fayetteville, twenty to forty in Bentonville, Rogers, Garfield, Eureka Springs, et cetera. I've also created a short-term rental alliance to advocate for different responsible regulations, reasonable regulations, responsible renting, et cetera. I come here today because I've worked with many councils, offered my assistance in creating different ordinances with Fayetteville. I've I've worked some with Bentonville, Bella Vista, now, hopefully, you guys, I can work with you. Um, Rogers, a little bit with them, some with Eureka Springs. I, um, I'm here to basically say, after reviewing this ordinance, it goes against the grain of many different ordinances. You know, in Fayetteville, their application fee is thirty-five dollars. This one is four hundred. Um, now, I understand it takes time. I was, I saw from the notes that there are a lot of, uh, the, the, things are backed up for inspections. The property owner shouldn't bear the burden of the public's backups. Also, um, the permitting process often is most successful within cities and municipalities, especially, you know, backing it up for people to get licensed potentially up to a year, if the regulation just allows a quick and easy permit. You know, one of the things that, that we have, you know, as citizens of communities, is to regulate businesses. There's no problem with that in my mind. We should pay our taxes. Airbnb pays taxes, VRBO does not, unless you have in, one individual property. Our company pays taxes through different companies like Avalara, MyTax Lodge. Anybody can get that to make sure a check is sent to the, to you guys. When you register a property, it helps to solve the problems of different troublesome na- uh, you know, the, the example of the fireworks. If there's multiple complaints for this property, you guys are able to track it. You are able to see how many complaints happen towards a registered property. To have to go through all of these different systems, you know, all the different processes, it's not always the most essential, as just seeing if there is problems to track. You can always come back three, five years if this becomes a problem, you have a lot of complaints, septic issues, people not keeping their properties up to code. However, we've heard tonight, most people do, because as we all know, to get the good reviews, to get recurring business, you should be a good steward of your land. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
May we have your first name and your address, sir?
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Rose. I live at Eight Lacyby Lane here in Bella Vista. Uh, we've been here about a year and a half. We moved here from Bend, Oregon, and Hood River, Oregon, and we left those coun- uh, these towns specifically because of this reason. And there's two arguments happening in this room tonight. There's an argument that's pro-short-term rentals, that's fighting against the ordinance. It's written that it has to do with safety and cleanliness and things like that. The other side of the argument is community. It hasn't been stated yet, but that's what it is. Nobody knows their neighbor, nobody knows they gotta contact their neighbor, and nobody knows how to deal with the problems of their neighboring houses. That's community. I think that's why all of us moved to Bella Vista in the first place, is for a nice community and a nice area. Uh, I can tell you right now that we're a long ways away from where this place is gonna go, northwest Arkansas. And if you don't act now to protect this community, this community will disappear. It will get overrun by people who don't live here. And while most people in here, I imagine, do take great care of their properties, um, I also own a motel in Bentonville. I've hosted over twelve-hundred nights since Sept- since September on my property. Uh, for all intents and purposes, it's a ten-unit short-term rental. It's a motel. Uh, we list our property on Airbnb, VRBO, Booking.com, and our own website. Um, most of the problems are fine. We don't have many problems. The guests that come in for this community are very good guests. They take good care of stuff. They do wanna go out and bike. They wanna be on the trails. They're usually not in the houses. But they're still not your neighbor. You still don't know them. You're never gonna get to know them, and you're never gonna build a relationship with them. They're transient. Um, in regard to safety and, and fairness across the lines, this Arkansas State Fire Marshal, uh, put into ordinance in this year, twenty-twenty-two, that requires all transient lodging to have an automatic sprinkler system for fire suppression. But they cannot check that, track that against short-term rentals, because they're not on a commercial lot, and they're in a different permitting system. But it's there, it's law in the state of Arkansas. All transient lodging in the state of Arkansas that goes through renovation and requires a permit is mandatory to put in a fire suppression system. That's based on anything that's rented under thirty days. So there, if you guys want fairness across the board, that's a big, big, big coin to flip. Um, I dealt with that at my motel. Protect the community. It's gonna disappear. We're only, we're in the, we're in ground floor two, about floor twenty where we're gonna go here, northwest Arkansas. This is gonna become the outer recognition capital of North America. It's gonna keep moving that way, and people are gonna keep moving here. Your homes that everybody's buying and spending money on, those homes are still gonna sell. There's still people coming here from California. You just might not be able to make money on, on the weekends. And that's what I prefer. I prefer to know my neighbors, to know the people I'm next to. If I leave my garage door open on accident, I wanna know that it's safe. I don't wanna know that there's twenty people down the road that I don't know. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeremy. Okay. My thanks to everyone. This has been a very good discussion. And, um, as I mentioned earlier, it's not all that easy to stand up and address, so I appreciate you taking the time. Um, we'll now move on to the next part, and that's the council reply, where council members have the opportunity to reply to the comments and concerns raised by citizens during the previous session. All right, Mr. Burke?
I'm really, really proud of this community. Uh, the, the quality of the, of the opinions that are spoken here tonight have been useful. They've been civil. They've been intelligent on both sides. I've seen, uh, you know, there's, obviously, there's people that are concerned about their neighborhoods and what they're living next door to, and, and I've seen people that are short-term rental owners and operators. I've seen them acknowledge the other people. And this is great. This is part of the process. You know, one of the things that, uh, kinda restricts city councils in Arkansas is the Freedom of Information Act. And we were seeing this proposed ordinance for the first time last week, and because of illness, we were a little bit handicapped in how far we could go in discussing it among ourselves. We're not allowed to pick up the phone and call each other and say, "Hey, uh, I think your baby's ugly." Uh, we have to work within the construct of our meetings, and, uh, that's what we do. And, uh, nonetheless, typically, we would allow thirty minutes for public input. Here we are. What are we at? Ninety-plus minutes into this. But it's been useful. I think, uh, my colleagues on city council would agree that, uh, we've, we've learned a lot. I've stayed at Airbnbs, uh, for many years. And in fact, I stayed in Airbnbs when I discovered Bella Vista. In fact, I think, I think I recognized Jessica. Uh, it'd be interesting to compare notes and see if, in fact, that's the case, but I probably stayed at one of her properties. In any case, this is, uh, one of the key ways that people discover Bella Vista. And yes, uh, we're represented here by probably the best of our operators. And, uh, and I, I think even the best of the operators would understand, we might have some bad apples, and we have to figure out, how do we address the, the least of the operators without taxing and putting bureaucracy on the entirety of the operators? That's our charge. That's what we're gonna do. We, we weren't about to, to do anything stupid here. Uh, as I say, we, we saw it in work session. We, several council members expressed some concerns over what we were seeing. We needed to move forward with the process. You guys are helping us with that process. Thank you all very much for being here tonight.
I'll go this way.
Okay.
Mr. Flynn?
Okay. Uh, I'd like to thank Steve for pointing that out about the Freedom of, of Information Act. This was actually the first time I had a couple people call me and complain about this before I'd seen it. We, we hadn't even had our work session yet. I guess a few people had seen it online. And, but the fact we can't talk to each other and pick up the phone and talk to Doug about it, we can only talk, uh, about legislation in the meeting, so I'm glad, uh, he explained that. I wanted to mention something I thought you might find of interest. I'm on the Advertising and Promotion Commission, and the other person that's on it is Doug, who's not here. And so I pulled out our budget for, uh, twenty-twenty-two, and we're estimating that we're gonna get a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars from lodging. And it's a two percent fee, so that means that, uh, the annual amount of rentals would be five-point-seven million to get, you multiply it by fifty and find out what the rentals are. So this is a big business in Bella Vista. And, you know, our sleepy little village, speaking of that, the, uh, restaurant side is estimated to be nineteen-point-nine million. And, uh, the, uh, uh, so, uh, this is a, a big deal in Bella Vista. I really would like to thank everybody who spoke on both sides of it. And one thing I was impressed by this meeting, and I'd never seen this before, is people clapping when people spoke on the other side. That's not, that's, I've never seen that before, and I thought it was very kind of you, because it, as the mayor said, it is hard to get up and speak. I think we really need to study hard on the, uh, septic part of the proposal. Uh, beside the popes, I had other people write me and indicate what their usage was, and, uh, I just think, uh, we need to have some more learning there in what all that means and what makes sense. Uh, I don't wanna get into all the details of it, but I, I indicated the work session. I thought four hundred was too high. I understand it costs us money to do things, but, uh, you know, I think the fee should be fifty bucks, and I think the permit should be good for three years. And, something along those lines. But, uh, I think there's a way to have regulation that does what needs to be done and tries to, uh, uh, protect the people who need protected and still not be a big burden on business. I think that's doable, and we just need to do some studying to figure out how to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Wilms? I'm just gonna go through everybody.
Oh, uh, you caught me off guard. Let, I'll, I'll let, uh...
Okay, Mr. Snow?
Uh, well, a couple of things. Uh, in response to Ms. Blackwell, I've spoken to a number of people who have...
Turn it up. Turn your volume up. Get a little closer to the mic.
Get the mic here a little closer. How about that?
That's better.
In response to Ms. Blackwell, um, I've spoken to a lot of people who have, uh, lived next door to a short-term rental in the townhouses. And the Townhouse Association is responsible for a lot of the problems that are a lot of the, uh, situation. They can, they can deal with a lot of it in a situat- in a situation that the city cannot, in that they have their own guidelines, their own regulations. They have a, um, they have a, um, again, their own guidelines and regulations. At, uh, and I, I think that some of those are outdated and probably need to be updated, but the, they can, they can deal with that, um, and the upkeep and the, the, uh, the manner in which the, the property is not being maintained. That can be handled by the Townhouse Association. The parking, uh, parking, that would become un- that'd be a city issue. Um, we've heard a lot from people tonight. I did not know that there was a, somewhat of a town, not a townhouse, but somewhat of a STR rental group that, um, that is somewhat, I don't know how active they are, as well as Mr. Humphrey, who has apparently dealt with these issues, that, um, that could possibly provide a lot of information, a lot of input on, um, further dealing with this particular ordinance. Uh, I don't think that we, um, what, we can deal with all of these issues, um, by the July meeting, so, but we get around to that, uh, to that ordinance in the, in the list here. I'm gonna propose that it be tabled for a period of at least ninety days.
Okay. Mr. Wilms?
Thank, thank you. I guess one observation might be is that, uh, the sales tax that was reported tonight, a hundred and twenty-one thousand, some of that may be from other, uh, multifamily rental systems like the Greens, uh, I think over by, uh, by Reardon. There's some properties over there that may fit in that sales tax income part, so it may be misleading a little bit. I'd like to thank the folks who, um, who came and spoke tonight, both sides. I think it was, um, uh, very informative to hear the comments that we heard, um, experience, firsthand experience of those who rent and own properties, those who manage them, and those who live next door to problem sites. Um, and those are the ones that we heard a lot about when the Community Development Group held a, a information workshop one afternoon here about a couple of months ago, where this has precipitated. We had, uh, an issue, uh, we talked about septic tonight a considerable amount. Uh, we have, uh, one part of a two-part program completed that dealt with builders building new homes or dwellings, and then getting approval on a two-bedroom with, uh, uh, an office area designation and another room, and a, uh, exercise, uh, or workout, or whatever, in a second room. Uh, at the time they get their occupancy permit, they would list it as a four-bedroom home. And that was a problem that we were seeing all too, all too frequently by irresponsible builders. Uh, we resolved that, uh, program, but it took us almost, what, Doug, a year? Uh, to work through, to find language that was suitable not only to the realtors, the builders, but also to our staff that was workable. Uh, this may be a similar issue that will take us some time. The septic issue was one that was paramount, because we have a major portion of Bella Vista on septic, which is, your treatment plan is on your ho- on your dwelling site. Uh, older ones, the records are less than accurate and complete. We heard someone comments about that tonight. I firsthand experience myself is, confirms that. We have sewer service in some areas of the city as a result of developer finding some soils in Bella Vista are not very perkable for onsite disposal. Uh, so we do have a sewer system, but it's privately owned, a nonprofit group. They do a good job. They manage their system well. They're not able, at least at the present time, as I understand, to serve one hundred percent of Bella Vista. Uh, they have plans for expansion. Uh, they have capacity at their plant. Uh, the collection system becomes the issue. The topography in Bella Vista is compounding that challenge for them. Um, we know that septic systems, long-term, if well-maintained and not overloaded and abused, will last a lifetime. Uh, there's history all over the U.S. of rural areas that have septic systems that run for hundreds of years or a hundred years without failure. Um, so that's an area that the council is yet to embark upon, and may be a partial solution to address the concerns that are in this particular ordinance. Thank you.
Chief?
Well, we certainly didn't open up an industrial-sized can of worms. And, you know, this, some of us, me and a gentleman on the other end, you know, we, all we wanted to do was find out who owned these places, so in case there was a complaint, we had someplace to go. That's how it started. Well, like I said, it got a little convoluted. And in order to be brief, some of you have heard, your mind will only absorb what your butt will endure. You guys have been here for two hours. Thank you for coming. We will get this right one way or the other.
Okay, so I realize that many of you don't have agendas. We have three housekeeping items, and then we have two old pieces of business, and then right after that, the two ordinances, the zoning and the regulations, will be held. So it, it'll take a, a little bit, but it won't be a long while to get there. So you're welcome to stay, um, or you can follow some of the crowd that's on their way out. But again, um, thank you very much for coming, those of you that left, and also speaking this evening. Okay, council, let's move on. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the May twenty-third regular meeting. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I think it was actually Chief and Mr. Snow. Right. Mr. Snow?
Roll call vote. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, five-zero.
Next is the May, not the March, uh, financial report that our finance director has issued for the five-month period ending the end of May. We are continuing to be extremely healthy. Our balance sheet is very, very strong, especially when you look at assets versus, uh, versus liability. Um, revenues are also doing well. And, um, at this point, in talking with the finance director and looking out towards the end of the year, we really see no problem at this point. And, um, if any of you would like to see it, you can let me know, and I can email it to you, but we usually have hard copies available in the lobby of City Hall as well. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Next.
Was that Flynn, second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Carrie?
Moving into all business, the first is an ordinance amending Section 107-317, Access Management of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Bella Vista to provide clarification regarding access drive distance from intersections and for other purposes. This is the second reading. I did hear from Senior Planner Lynn today. Um, they're still working on a couple of issues. He expressed special thanks to, uh, Councilmember Wilms for his assistance. If they have not worked out these issues by July, then they will ask to table, but they have no problem with the second reading this evening.